Good morning, everyone. This special council meeting is to deal with a motion that Councilor Brown wants to put before us today. Uh, City Manager, do you want to start out with anything before?
Command.
All right, so Councilor Brown.
Thank you, ma'am. I need to direct the city manager to submit a purchase offer using park bond funds for Civic Stadium property to the 4J School Board by December 3rd, 2013. If I get a second, I would like to speak to this.
Second.
Thank you. The fundamental premise of this motion is to preserve and rehabilitate this wonderful gift from our grandparents' generation, retain this public space, and to return it to active, affordable, family-friendly community use in a fiscally prudent manner that does not compromise our already overstressed general fund and does not negatively impact the city's ability to deliver the accustomed services. The first step is for the city to gain site control by having a purchase offer accepted by 4J. The source of those purchase funds is the Park Bond Fund, which can only be used to acquire parkland, nothing else, not operation, not maintenance, no other city service, only to acquire parkland. The actual physical, the cost of the physical renovation of the grandstands, parking lot, and playing field would be paid from the constantly growing escrow fund account that has been recently established, and that, I'll speak about that fund a little bit later. The city would then select, in a competitive process, a general contractor, and the general contractor would be paid from the escrow account. Then the city would select, in a competitive process, a firm who will manage the property, quite similar to the arrangement that we already have with Cuthbert Amphitheater. And I think the best example is the example of the city of Portland, and with their version of Civic Stadium now called Geltwin, the city owns that. The owner of the team, the soccer team, pays the city a positive revenue stream every month. The city is not on the hook for Geltwin Field. The city actually makes money on it. And that would be the idea here. There's no reason that couldn't happen here. The L S E would pay ground lease, a percentage of ticket sales, and the city can use those funds to refresh the parkland acquisition fund or to operate and maintain parkland that we already own. If, after purchasing this property, and for whatever reason, the project cannot move forward, the city's fail-safe fallback option would be to resell the property for private development. This path exposes the city to minimal financial risks for potential maximum great public benefit. And it also does not, once the city gains site control, the city can then partner with the YMCA or the Oregon Track Club, Track Town, for, to redevelop the other part of the property. But we have to save what's there first. To acquire land like this with a facility like that, an eminently repairable facility, anywhere else in town would cost many, many, many more millions of dollars. And I guess I-
So, Councilor Brown, the problem is that our timers aren't working. And so, I guess I could just let you go on, but-
No, I'm done with my first round. I'm sorry. Anyone have a stopwatch?
Yeah, will you time it for us? That would be great. Thank you. I was joking.
Keep our eyes on Beth.
You have a very large gong?
Or a hook? No. All right. I've got Claire, and Mike, and Betty in the queue.
Thank you. Thank you, George, for bringing this motion forward. I have some thoughts and then some questions. I might need two rounds. So, I see that, I feel like we're having this discussion here at the council table because some years ago, the school board made a decision to declare Civic Stadium and the land around it surplus, instead of holding themselves accountable to the original deed for the land, which was to remain in public hands for use as a park or recreation facility. So now it seems like the city is the only public entity remaining that is interested in trying to ensure that the land stays in public hands. And I think we have some obligation to keep public land in the public domain, especially considering that, once it's lost to private development, it can never be reclaimed as a park or open space. That's, that's pretty much a foregone conclusion. I think we also have an opportunity to preserve and reuse a historic asset that the stadium represents. It's a part of our local, state, and national history, and a lot of folks have spoken more eloquently than I would be able to about that. I do believe it has a real potential to become a regional recreation center, not a neighborhood park, not even just a community park, but a regional recreational center that would be accessible to the public, that will provide for athletics, potentially arts and culture, and community gatherings. It is difficult to have this conversation while we are also struggling with funding services that we pay for out of our general fund, but as Councilor Brown pointed out, the money that we would use to purchase this, if this motion passed, would come out of parks bond money that can only be spent to acquire land, not to pay for development or maintenance. So they are not competing in terms of the funding source there. I do believe we can be responsible and look ahead to a future when we're not in this current budget crisis, where this land would actually be a significant driver of economic development and bring people to visit this region in much the same way Hayward Field does, and provide a place for people to be physically active, which is an important value for our community, and come together as a community in the way the stadium did serve that purpose for the majority of its existence since it was built, and so we could put it back into that valuable use. Then I'll take a second round.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I will want a second round as well. I agree with a good number of the things that Claire said about the school district and about, what I would say, I guess differently is, in a perfect world, yes, absolutely. I agree with a good deal of that. The challenge for me is that the world we're in is one where we simply cannot afford to do this. We can afford to buy it. We can afford with the money that's there in the park bond to purchase it. But we will then have signed up for an obligation that is, different people have different ideas about what it would cost to renovate this facility between, I've heard numbers that vary as widely as $3 to $15 million. We do not have that money unless we want to alter course and use our facilities' reserve funds. Other than that, what we have are promises. But we would certainly be on the line at that point for seeing it done. We've had, in the last three years, lots of people with many good ideas for this, but no concrete plans that have established where that money would come from, even up until today. The long-term maintenance is something we certainly can't afford, and all of us sat the other night for a number of hours talking about our city's budget and cutting millions out because we can't afford what we do right now. We talked about cutting all parks' maintenance out, much less the maintenance on this facility, which I've heard said could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. The choice is an ugly one, because I personally would like to see us maintain this from a love of history standpoint, but we simply can't afford it. When you look at the alternatives, and how am I doing for time there? When you look at the alternatives, I certainly don't advocate for either of the publicly discussed options out there for, for RFPs. But if you looked at the Fred Meyer one as a, as an example, if that were developed on that site, I did the calculation, and conservatively, you're talking about $275 to $300,000 a year in taxes to the city. So suddenly, one of the decisions we're going to make this year, whether to keep the Bethel Branch Library open or not for $350,000, whether or not we're going to keep the Sheldon Branch Library open or not, whether or not we're going to do a number of other things that are on or about that exact same dollar amount, will be the choice. Were this to be developed at its market rate to a useful purpose that serves all of our other planning, like Envision Eugene, we'd have the capacity to save programs we're going to likely have to cut, as opposed to putting ourselves further in debt. I'd like a second round, please. Thank you.
Betty?
Thank you. May I be Beth's second? When she, when she raises her hand, I can raise mine. People over there can't see. Anyway, first, I, we are not even thinking of maintaining or renovating with the city's money. No one has suggested that. It's, we're talking about purchasing, which is what this parks bond money is for. I think it's our, George said there's something about this being our grandparents' heritage. In my case, I would say my parents' generation were the people who saved this, who built it and saved it, just as they were the people who saved the Ridgeline Trail, things that are really important to us now. And I think it's up to us to be good stewards of what has been left to our city and for the future generations who will value this. I've told you this story before, but I met a man in Virginia who was from Alaska. He was with his young son, and when he saw I was from Eugene, he saw my name tag, he said, "She's from that place where they have that wonderful old stadium, and there are only a few of them left in the country." And he started describing it to his little boy. And if we have something like that, we shouldn't let it be destroyed. If it's within our power to save it. And there are, it's, it's, there are many people who care about it for different reasons, but to me, it is just a part of our history and something we should not allow to be destroyed as long as we can do anything at all to save it. Too much of our history in Eugene has been demolished already. And I'm totally in favor of our purchasing, and I'm confident that there is a group of people who will take care of the rehabilitation and the maintenance. Thank you.
George Bulling?
Well, since our last discussion, I haven't heard a single thing that make me think otherwise in my original idea that this is the wrong way to go. In fact, at some of the, the two public outreach sessions that we did at Budget Committee, the comments I heard about Civic Stadium was, "Please, don't purchase it. It's the wrong way to go." You know, Mike was talking about the park maintenance, cut, the budget cuts in park maintenance. Our parks are not being maintained at a satisfactory level as it is right now, and we're talking about cutting more. And if we purchase this with parks bond money and not do anything with it, it's going to cost us tens of thousands of dollars a year just to mothball the, the property until that magical group shows up with their money to spend anywhere from 10 to, or $3 to $10, $15 million to refurbish it. Council made a decision here several months or a year or so ago to spend the facility reserves on the new city hall. We're into that process now, and for us to reverse course and to take the facility reserve fund that was being earmarked for the city hall and take it somewhere else will make us even a bigger laughingstock in the community than, than we're trying to be right now. So I think we need to stay the course on this, the city hall project, and I don't think we need to go into this and, and buy a piece of property that we, the city, have no idea what we're going to do with it, and that, you know, hopefully that somebody will step forward with, with money. And as far as, you know, we're not Portland. We don't have the population. We don't have a fan base like Portland has, and to think that we can compare Civic Stadium in the future, maybe, making a, you know, profit like they do in Portland, to me is just, is just a no-point argument. So I cannot support purchasing this property, and I think that 4J is a rightful owner, and they need to make up their mind what they're going to do with it. And back when we put, the comments that I made the last time we talked about this, the Y is trying to purchase the property. The city is working with the Y to try to develop something for the community in the Bethel-Danabell area. We're working with the Y on that. So why are we working against the Y for something for south in the South Eugene area? It doesn't make sense.
Chris?
What is a reasonable risk? That's what I keep coming back to. I don't have anything against Civic Stadium. I think it's, it's, it could be a great place if the risk were reasonable. But at this point, we're talking about just the first step of what is a whole series of steps. And beyond that first step, we don't have a clear path of where to go, just hopes. And I'm all for hopes, and it's not as if the city has not invested in hope before we do it, but that hope has to be based on a reasonable risk, and I'm not really getting a reasonable risk here. It's been said, we're only talking about buying it. We're not even thinking about fixing it or operating it. And to me, that's not reasonable. You don't talk about buying something without thinking about what you're going to do with it once you have it and how you're going to take care of it in, in the long term. And we don't have that. We do have some well-intentioned folks who have raised a small amount of money, a fraction, though, of what is needed. And we don't know if the rest of that money is coming through. What is the reasonable risk there? As I've said before, it's hard to raise money, particularly in this kind of an environment for this kind of a reason. And not just money to renovate, but money to operate. And it would cost us money if we buy this property, and we don't know what that solution is going to be. The M's were there, and if it was such a great place in terms of its condition, they'd still be playing there, but they're not. They left. And I remember negotiating the deal with them when I was on the school board, and they were uncomfortable with the long term, simply because that stadium is not in good enough shape for them to conduct it as a regular sports venue. So you'd have to do some major work to get it back to where somebody would really want to be there. That's very expensive, and if there was going to be a major angel out there, I would think they would have shown themselves by now, but they haven't. And so a lot of very, very well-intentioned, good-hearted people raising small amounts of money is not the reasonable risk that I'm willing to take. Now, if we did buy the property, and, and worse comes to worse, and it doesn't work out, the notion's been offered, okay, well, we'll just sell it. The school district's been trying to sell it for several years, not very easily. And so I don't think it would be very easy for us to sell it. The pressure on us, when it came time to sell, would be unbelievable. We would endure a significantly difficult process to try to sell this piece of property once we had it in our possession. I can just tell you that flat out. So it wouldn't be an easy sale. It would be very tough. For all of those reasons, and as much as I like Civic Stadium and the knowledge that we do have to cut money out of our budget, and the public, we can make the case that this is money that can't be spent for any other reason, but if we're closing down something and buying stadiums, that's a fairly simple thing that people are going to see. And if we have to go out and start explaining it to them, I'm not sure it'll work all that well. I'm worried that, in the best interests of this city, trying to balance its budget and do all the other things it needs to do, this could be an encumbrance that doesn't represent a reasonable risk to me. Thank you. I don't need any more rounds.
So, I've been doing a lot of thinking about this, and I look around the table, and I see pretty much people are where they were. So I'm going to offer you my thoughts about this. I'd hoped for a delay. I'd hoped for an additional proposal to emerge that could give birth to a soccer future for that facility. I wish there'd been more votes on the school board to give it a bit more time. I've been hoping for the win-win-win. That would be Civic, Y, Soccer. This would be great for the community and the school district. I'm disappointed, but it's not our property, and it's not our call. I want to give enormous kudos to folks who have raised $180,000 in a couple weeks to demonstrate what is possible. I want to thank the many people who have sent emails in support of saving Civic. They've worked tremendously hard. Unfortunately, current resources fall short of what is needed over the long haul. I think Civic is valuable to us as a community. I also know we lack resources to own it, renovate it, and run it. I also want to acknowledge those who write us of the many needs for city funds right now to provide basic services. I want to remind the public that park bonds can only be used for specific things. They cannot be used for roads, libraries, pools, or schools. So I've tried to think how I can be responsibly approach this. If it's true, potential significant investor in Civic and Soccer's in the wings, and I believe that's true, now is the time for that investor to speak up, even if all the details aren't worked out. There's just not much time left. In the meantime, I would support a motion to have the manager prepare a proposal for 4J, that we are willing to use park bond funds based on the contingency that partners step forward over the next 60 days to commit adequate funds for renovation and ongoing program, maintenance, and so forth. Given our budgetary challenges, I can only support using park bonds for this property if we have such a guarantee within the 60 days. So that's my, that is what I can support. It's up to you guys what you want to do.
Well, I'd like to amend the motion to, to incorporate what you just said. When it becomes time to do that-
You're up next. I put you in the, well, we're in first round, and you haven't, you want to speak in the first round, go ahead, Alan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I was at the 4J School Board last night, and I was disappointed. I thought it was a short-sighted decision. I don't think any harm would have been caused to 4J or their credibility by, by the delay. So I was, I thought that was a, not a very good decision. I support what you're trying to do, Mayor, and I'll support the amended motion. I think we should be clear, this is, this has two parts to it. First, the acquisition and site control, and then the plan on what to do with it. Your motion or amendment clearly lays out that as, as the ability to do that without harm to the city. And, and we can buy it with park bonds and figure out what, how to rehab it. I think that's a good plan. I think there is people that are willing to step up with large sums of money to be able to do this. My experience is that good ideas and interesting ideas in this community take time to percolate and coalesce, and that's what I see happening here. Just a little while ago, the Kaufman Center was a good example, but on a much smaller scale, where we said, "Don't sell the property. Something might happen." And lo and behold, a couple months later, the extension service came and took over that site, and we didn't, and we didn't lose a valuable community asset. I think that can occur here, too. When people with the stature and, and significance of Art Johnson and credibility that Art Johnson brings to the table get involved, we should make note. And that's really significant. And it also means things can happen, and things can happen, and things can get done. So I don't think this is the same as the general fund budget issue. This is not general fund money. If people can't understand that, we need to educate them about it. But it's not general fund money. It cannot be used for road school and, and parks and all those other things. It can only be used to acquire, acquire property, and it won't change our short-term budget issue one bit at all. And if we can do it responsibly and get people to step up to rehab it, it won't impact our long-term budget either. So I think it's, it's not irresponsible. It's irresponsible if the, if Civic goes away. We do such a poor job in this community about preserving our history, and this is an iconic historic structure that speaks loudly to me about our heritage and what we are as a city, and I think letting it go away would be a shame. And I think we have to step up to the plate. The risk is that we can't figure it out and that we need to sell it. And I think that's a very low risk. I think it, and we might even sell it for more than we buy it for. I think it would be easy to sell. The problem is, is the process and the way that, that 4J has done it. If we give it a good try and can't do it, that whole, I think the cloud around that goes away, and it becomes a lot more easy to deal with that property. So I'll support the motion. Motion from the mayor.
So I, I just want to clarify that what my motion does essentially is give 60 days to have other people step up. It does not say that we, we're going to go purchase it and then hope. It says, we head out the door, we, we, we say that if it doesn't happen in 60 days, we're, we're not going to go through with it.
So it's a contingent offer to 4J, then?
Yep.
Correct. Okay.
I can read it again if you want me to. George?
Why don't you read it again, please?
And what constitutes guarantee?
I would support a motion to have the manager prepare a proposal to 4J to use park bond funds based on the contingency that partners step forward over the next 60 days to commit adequate funds for renovation and ongoing program, maintenance, and so forth. Given our budgetary challenge, I can only support park bond funds for this property when we have such a guarantee in place.
Point of order, do we know what that amount is?
You, that's up, that's up to you guys. Yep.
Well, you may have to have an executive session and to, to hammer these things out, and I'm wondering if perhaps, I don't know what the mechanics are, I, I really like what you just said. I think it's fabulous, but I'm wondering if that would be hammered out in an executive session as one of the contingencies for the, the offer that we would make, rather than adding it to, I'm happy to add it to the motion, but I'm wondering if that's the right step.
The motion that the council passes should include, it doesn't have to include the specific language of the contingency that we would actually include in the proposal that we send to 4J, but the motion should include that, I mean, at least to get your vote, Mayor, it should be specific that the manager is directed not to make just a straight-up offer, but the offer shall include the contingency that the other thing happens. We can work out the language that goes into the proposal. I also want to say, you, you do need the executive session, and that needs to be today.
So do, so is it your advice that we have the executive session and then come back and make the motion, or not?
No. My suggestion is that if you have the votes to, to pass the motion with the contingency, then we go into executive session primarily to talk about-
Numbers.
The numbers.
So do you need to, he said he would accept the, the language that I have here. So you want to give him the, somebody has to put the motion, I can't put the motion on the table, so.
If the, well, if the, if George and Betty as the maker of the motion and the second are accepted as a friendly amendment, then it can be part of the motion, but before you actually vote, we would want the whole motion read one more time.
And you will have that?
If you give me what you just did, I will do that while you-
Okay, George, you're up.
I have, yes, I'd like one, maybe two more rounds, and I probably won't take the whole time. I'd just like to say that, that nobody has yet, nobody at this table, nobody in the city organization, nobody from the general public has yet provided a reasoned evidence, supported rebuttal to this pathway for saving and repurposing this unique gift, except to say, "We can't afford it." But our grandparents' generation, our predecessors, in much harder economic times, in the depths of the Great Depression, they didn't say, "We can't afford to do this." They knew the depression would end. They just didn't know exactly when, but they were hopeful and forward-thinking. And in May of 1938, they, they agreed by two-to-one margins to two ballot measures. The tax themselves, or the tax lobby. The first was to create Civic Stadium, and then they raised the money to actually build it. And four months later, in September of that same year, it was opened for the first high school football game. The other ballot measure, these, these far-thinking ancestors of ours passed, they purchased 280 acres on top of Spencer's Butte, which is the foundation for that wonderful park and trail system up there, Headwaters Protection, the Raptor Center. Can you imagine what Spencer's Butte would look like today had they not done that? I mean, I, I think we all pretty much know what it would look like. They keep telling ourselves that we can't do this, to surrender to the private sphere, this wonderful matchless gift of public, that our predecessors, at great cost and effort, bequeathed to us. I really believe it would, it would just be a tragic mistake and one that we'll regret forever and ever and ever, and I'd like us to keep in mind one of the pillars of Envision Eugene. Pillar number five, recognize the value that historic properties contribute to community character and livability, and work to preserve those properties. And I feel if we, if we violate the principle of this, of this pillar, I'm wondering about the validity of all the other pillars, because I, I support those pillars. I believe in them, but if we, if we go against them, that's going to lose some credibility. And I would like one more round before we finish.
Claire? Thank you. So I have some questions for city manager and staff. So using these, if we use these park bond, bonds, funds to purchase parkland, would that interfere with any parkland purchases that are already under consideration for other parts of the city?
The memo we gave you previously, early October, indicated that they're currently looking at a lot of neighborhood parklands right now. They've been conducting a pretty thorough GIS analysis to pick up some additional neighborhood parkland while they can. I don't think there's any sales in process right now, and I checked with Kurt this morning to make sure that the numbers were the numbers. So I think you're, you're safe on that.
So we wouldn't stop another purchase in another part of the city by using these funds to purchase Civic?
Wouldn't stop an active purchase, but you would certainly preclude a future purchase.
Right, because we've used up some funding. Okay. Would our purchase of Civic preclude us from working with the YMCA to co-locate-
You wouldn't stop an active purchase, but you would certainly preclude a future purchase.
Right, because we've used up some funding, okay. Would our purchase of Civic preclude us from working with the YMCA to co-locate their facility with the stadium in the same kind of partnership we're pursuing with the Y in Bethel right now?
It wouldn't preclude us from working with them or anybody else.
So in theory, by, if this motion passes and we make an offer and it's accepted, we could still partner with the Y to have them realize their vision and do some kind of lease arrangement or sell a parcel of the land to them? Is that in theory possible?
In theory, it's possible. The piece that I can't give you an answer off the top of my head is how that works with having used park bond money to purchase and then selling it off. And that's something that I'd want to double-check with bond counsel before being able to advise you on that.
But potentially, a lease agreement would be allowable?
Potentially, yes, but still the same issue. I need bond counsel to advise on what the limitations are if we use the park bond money and then be able to turn around and lease part of it or sell part of it. That's a bond counsel question, and I haven't asked them that question.
Okay, so that's still a question, but I think that would be, I think, something we would want to pursue and find a way to continue to support the Y in their goals while also finding a way to accommodate the stadium, which would have been the ideal circumstance and wasn't accommodated for whatever reason. Would our purchase preclude us from selling or leasing to another party who's yet come forward? So same answer as what you just gave me. Could the money that's being collected in the escrow account, and I heard this morning, it's maybe closer to $200,000, be used for maintaining the facility while a project is being put together for restoration? I mean, obviously with their agreement?
Well, that would be up to them. If somebody wanted to donate money to the city for that purpose, the city can certainly accept dollars and use it for a specific purpose. My understanding, just from what I read in the newspaper, is that the money has been collected for a particular purpose and maintenance is not that purpose.
Okay.
The purpose is to actually use it for renovation. All I know is what I've read in the paper.
So they've got some money, they would have to decide for themselves if they could switch the designation of that or raise additional funds and donate them for the purpose of the mothballing maintenance while something happens. So I just want to say, I really appreciate the perspective of my fellow councilors, whether they're for this motion or not. I think we all share the same concerns about fiscal responsibility and what the city's role here is. I don't think anyone is wrong in terms of the position we may have taken, even though we've landed in different places. I support the mayor's amendment. I've been thinking about a similar proposal, that we have an offer that's contingent on other resources being identified before we actually purchase the land. I think there is more than just a hope here. I think there is a vision and real energy to make this work, and the city can provide the platform for which a creative and economically viable project can come forward and be realized. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Please put me down for another round as well. I don't know if I can get through all these notes by then. One of the, there's several things here. One, a part of this discussion talks about it as though, and what I've seen in the newspapers and so forth, is that this decision is somehow a public good versus a private good. That somehow the restoration of the stadium, the saving of this public asset versus the private development of this space is somehow a private good versus a public good sort of decision, but it's not. It's clearly not. This is a public good versus a public good decision. This is what the city can afford to do. Because whether or not we have the money committed, and I would like to ask the mayor a couple of questions about your motion, if you'll be willing to. Whether or not that money is found, when we buy this, we're on the hook, and that's that. And we don't have that money. So we're actually making a decision, much like Chris was saying, which is, we're risking that we're going to have to cut other public programs and other public goods versus being able to pay for doing this. So it's not any kind of decision of public versus private. To George, who mentioned that no alternatives have been put forward, I would suggest there have been, but we're not willing to do them, and they are also public versus public choices. For example, I've suggested and firmly believe that the city should, it's a much higher value for the city to have a Civic Stadium than a Civic golf course. And I would be in favor in a minute to sell Laurelwood in order to acquire Civic. I'll do it right now. That's a yes vote for me, anybody that wants to do it. Because that's a fair trade of one city asset that we should have and should preserve for one that we should not. And I've also had a discussion with some of you. I had some kind of wild ideas earlier in the week. I know the votes are not there. But I, too, wanted to see us extend every possible effort possible. And I threw around with some the idea that perhaps we use the facility reserve fund to renovate the stadium, along with those funds that are being promised. And reopen the idea of the E-Web Admin Building leased to purchase as the appropriate place for City Hall. But George has mentioned his sentiments on that already, so I don't believe the votes are there to do that. But there are many of us who've wanted to find alternatives. How much time do I have there? I have all my questions for you, Mayor, on this motion and the specifics of it when I get the next round, because there's a lot of vast room in some of these words here for what you mean.
Betty?
Thank you. I just want to make some comments on some things that have been said about the facility reserve. I don't think we're even discussing using the facility reserve to purchase this. We're discussing using park bond money for what it was intended for, which is purchasing land. And as for, they're not raising much money yet. I think they've raised quite a lot, but it will be much easier to raise money once we have the ownership secured. It's not easy to raise money for something that's just vague, something you might do. And I think it's remarkable they've raised as much as they have on a possibility. And once we have the ownership secured, it will take off, I think. And I do believe in taking chances for something that's worthwhile. Of course, we're taking chances. As for reselling it, if we should need to resell it, I think property values will only go up. There isn't that much land left. And we could, if it came necessary to sell it for some reason, I'm sure that we could do it. But I don't think that's what we ought to even be considering at the moment. Thank you.
Alan?
Again, let's just be real clear. We're talking about acquiring the property with the park bond money, which can only be used for that purpose. And then others would step up to the plate and fund the renovation and potentially the ongoing maintenance of it. And we have this contingency in there that pulls together in the next 60 days, otherwise we don't move forward. So the risk of this laden us with a problem is pretty low. As for Laurelwood, my understanding is that actually is a park, and that was purchased with park bond monies. And it's actually our least expensive park in our inventory, because it actually creates revenue. If we were going to go ahead and sell parks, then I would suggest that we list them in order of how expensive they are and then try to figure out how to get rid of the most expensive park, not the least expensive park in our inventory. But I think that there actually is a very high potential that this can be pulled together. Couple of things. People have really coalesced around this idea. It's still percolating, but it's starting to get a lot of traction in the community. And it's getting attention from a lot of people outside this community as well. There is so much potential for this soccer team, and this become a soccer stadium for a professional soccer team. There is no reason in the world that the Portland Timbers can't have their minor league team down here. I think they would love to do that. I think people would be jumping at the chance to be able to do that in the second biggest city in Oregon. And I think that that is the number-one sport in kids' sports. It's the upcoming sport in the world. It has, if you've ever been to a Timbers game and seen the army up there, fanatics, that's where the term "fan" comes from, and they exemplify that in a good way. It's amazing what kind of support that community has around that project, I mean, around that team and especially that venue. And I think in the end, this could be really a good thing and actually help the city out in its budget and towards the end of this. Again, what we're talking about is other people funding the renovation and us buying the property.
Glenn, I want to ask a question. In that language that you put together, it could happen that the money came forward and it's part of that money if they want to own the property outright and pay for it. I don't want to preclude that. I just don't want to make that a requirement. Does that, understand what I'm saying?
I'm just thinking through how it happens, but we can get there.
Okay, all right. Okay, Chris, you're up.
Thank you. I really appreciate the mayor's thinking and the willingness to accept it. I think it shows a lot of creativity for addressing what, for me, are major concerns, which is the high degree of uncertainty. And so I'm saying that as a prelude to saying that, even though I feel as a matter of principle obliged to vote against it, I won't be upset if it does pass, because this contingency, I think, still provides the degree of safety that we're looking for in terms of not taking an unreasonable risk. It still says that this trigger doesn't get pulled unless the resources are there to do it. So as Claire said, I appreciate the creativity. I don't think ill of any of my colleagues, because we are on one side or the other of this issue. In fact, our willingness to sit at the table and try to work out a solution is probably this body working at its best. So regardless of the outcome of the vote, I think we'll all move forward as a body and try to do the best job we can with it. But I would absolutely encourage us, whether it's in an executive session or not, that we really try to put as much detail and meat on this bone as we can, so that we don't go forward with, I'll call it a blank check, but really, I want us to go forward with as much certainty as we can as to the kind of money we're talking about, the kinds of details, so that we can at least communicate with the public and let them know what's going on in our minds. So I appreciate all the effort that's gone into this so far.
Okay. And I've got two people in the queue, and then we're going to, you're one of them.
Okay, thank you.
And then we need to go to executive session.
Vote.
Vote and then go to executive session. Okay. So if, the quicker you can be, the quicker we can get it done. George, Ron, you're first.
I'll go real fast, Mayor. I just wanted to point out, you know, there were comments fairly, "Well, gosh, we're not Portland, we're different, we're not as big." You know, everything is proportional. Jethro and Field holds 20,000 fans. They're packed every night. They've been packed ever since the Timbers were formed. They've never not had a match that was not sold out. Civic Stadium's about a little under 5,000. That's a quarter. We're about, we're a little under a quarter of Portland's population. Everything's proportional. The teams would be initially the PDL, Professional Development League, with teams coming from 12 other cities on the West Coast. There would be many teams in the Timbers Alliance with Eugene Metro from Southern Oregon, Central Oregon, and Southern Washington. All these teams will be coming here. It's a really good-sized stadium. It's the perfect size, really, for the next jump up to the United Soccer League, the professional league, just below Major League Soccer. So everything's in proportion here. It's the right size, it's, and no one, again, nobody is suggesting that the city paid for the operation. We would follow Portland's model, and I would suggest that we talk to Dave Logstun. He's the facilities manager who explained to me how their system works. They've always been happy to share information. It is not a money loser for the city of Portland. It brings a positive revenue stream for the city of Portland. And significantly, I think, when the Portland, city of Portland did reinvest a significant amount of money, there were no calls from the business community, there were no calls from residents, from the development community, there were no calls on the city council or the city organization to tear down their Civic Stadium and build commercial and residential and any other use. It was pretty much unanimous, "No, we're going to keep it. It's a great city resource, centrally located, we're going to keep it, we're not getting rid of it." And they figured out a way to do that, a very sensible, fiscally responsible way, and we can do the same thing here. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Claire and Chris's comments. I, too, don't, this isn't a personal thing, I appreciate everybody's point of view, even if it's different. I just, I think the judgment to do this is poor. I also have some concerns that we're doing it again. Three years later, we're sticking our finger in the YMCA's eye again. This is what happened when they had a proposal on the table last time, and to the others, where we had soccer as the opportunity to save this. I remember the pictures, I remember the drawings for what it would look like, I remember the promises that Rick Wright would make regular payments to be able to take care of this, and none of that took place. So forgive me that I'm a little bit skeptical about this. And despite the thousands of dollars that the YMCA and others have spent to prepare in good faith with what the school district asked, we're going to step in again. And certainly, they've let us know that they're not interested in partnering with us, because they wouldn't have enough space. So we're essentially precluding what they can do. Mayor, the two words that scared me most that you used were about the amount and commit and guarantee, commit or guarantee. Councilor Brown has mentioned $3 million for renovation. People that I know have said as much as 15, a lot of people say eight, nine, 10. That's a pretty wide range. How much is it that's necessary to be in the escrow account in 60 days? What is the amount for your comfort?
I don't have a number.
So if somebody put $2 million in there, would that be sufficiently, quote, "enough"?
I think that's part of the discussion that we'll probably.
That's a great concern to me, and I think, okay, I was just kind of making a point that I think it should be, for those who are voting in favor of this, that's a pretty wide gap of what enough is. And I'm not sure what that number is before voting on whether or not to say yes to that. Number two, what is a commitment or a guarantee? That money's in the escrow account? Is that what you intended by that?
I didn't say anything about the escrow account, at all.
No, no, you said a guarantee, and I was trying to find out what that meant from you, if you would, if you were interested.
And I would say that in the executive session, when we talk about what we need to have in it, then we'll give the city manager direction and he will.
I'm a no vote on this, and I appreciate your answer, Mayor. But I would urge those of you who are going to vote yes to this, that you don't know what constitutes a guarantee, and you don't know what constitutes how much, but you're going to feel comfortable with saying we're on the hook anyway. That should concern people, I think.
Oh, Greg?
As I've said before, you know, I agree with just about everybody around this table about the fact that we would like to save Civic Stadium. But we are in circumstances that I think, you know, preclude the involvement of the city at the type of level and level that is being suggested and through those park bond funds. To Alan's point, I have never seen anybody in our business deal with someone who is identified as others. There are no, you know, we, I think we need to have a concrete plan with people who are willing to step up publicly and put their name or their bank account or whatever the case may be on the line and say, "We're willing to put X amount of dollars towards this facility, and this is what the commitment is, this is what the full plan is, this is what we're going to do." I note that this morning in the paper, when asked, Dave Perez, "Has anybody talked to him about alternatives with regard to the Y's proposal?", and he said, "No." People aren't talking to other people in this case. The people who want to save Civic Stadium, who are raising money and putting things together, have not necessarily talked to other people who possibly could have a more creative way to address this issue. I'm pretty much in the same place as I was before. I just think that we need to have more certainty, we need to have more clarity as a city and a community, and we have other obligations that may not have anything to do with the park bond money. obligations that may not have anything to do with the park bond money. But in the real world, people will hold us accountable for all of it. And if we have to come up five, six months down the line and close somebody's swimming pool, library, all of that that are currently being used and in play, and they see that we buy the stadium over here, they're not going to make those differentiations in what fund was, you know, used to buy what. And then we don't have a fully developed plan for how that stadium would be renovated, maintained, and even used. There's a whole bunch of different things out there. And I remember one last thing, too.
Let's hand this up.
Yeah. Well, I'll get this one then. It's been since '09. We knew what the school district wanted to do with this property.
So very quickly, because we do have to get... it's getting on to 10 till 1. We need to make a decision and then go to executive session if the decision goes to do that. So, Alan, very quickly.
Just to be clear, that's exactly what this motion does, Greg. It says, "We won't buy this unless we have a plan and financing in place. Otherwise, the purchase doesn't occur." So that's exactly what we're doing. So I'm glad you agree with that. I'm sorry you won't support the motion, but that's exactly what the plan is. Don't move forward unless you have a plan with financing, solid financing behind it. So with regard to the Y, I actually did talk to Dave Perez in the first round of this at length, met him in his office about this. They made it very clear and have subsequently made it very clear that they want to go it on their own. It wasn't a point in having another conversation with them. If we're going to have... it would be a short conversation. We want to do this on our own. That's their first choice. Having... they might change their mind if we acquire the property and then work to make the Y happen. I think that's very doable. I think that part of that property can fit what the Y needs to do. And so I think those two things are actually compatible. If they want to do it on their own, that's very understandable. They have to sell a big chunk of that property, which includes the stadium, and have it be privately developed in order to fund their... what they're trying to do. That's their proposal. And ironically, their initial partner was Capstone to put that massive amount of student housing in that particular spot, which I think is probably not the best use for that. So I'm really supportive of moving this forward because I think it... we will either have a solid business plan and partners and a private partnership, or we won't. And if we don't, then the offer falls and we're not in any harm. I think it also fits well with the 4J's timeline. We'll know before they start doing their deliberations about whether or not ours is going to fly or not.
Okay. Betty?
And I want to say, when I say I'll be quick, I really am. I just want to say one thing. I think that the citizens of Eugene are very intelligent and they can understand the difference between one fund and another fund. Thanks.
George?
One quick question. What happens to the maintenance? Who is responsible for the... paying for the maintenance on the facility if this magical fund that we're talking about runs dry? Is there some way to set that up?
Can we hear the motion?
It's in the motion.
I'll read the motion and see if that answers your question. So the first part of the motion is the original, and then there's an add-on. "I move to direct the city manager to submit a purchase offer using park bond funds for Civic Stadium property to the 4J School Board by December 3, 2013, with the offer contingent on other parties entering into an agreement with the city within 60 days satisfactory to the city manager that guarantees private funds for the cost of renovating, maintaining, and operating Civic Stadium."
It's his call. That's enough.
So the maintenance will be taken care of forever. It won't come back on the city as a financial responsibility?
As this motion is written, correct.
And we would talk about the details in executive session.
All right. All those in favor, please indicate.
Mayor, before you do that, I need the maker and the seconder to agree that this is their motion.
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay.
All right.
The manager to determine.
Ready to vote? All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4 in opposition. 1, 2, 3, 4. I'll be the yes vote. That makes five yes and four no. It passes. We're going to go into executive session now. "Eugene City Council will now meet in executive session held pursuant to ORS 192.6602E to discuss a negotiation of real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back in the room."
Language that I'd like you to add that guarantees not less than blank dollars, private funds for the cost of renovating, maintaining, and operating Civic Stadium. And so the effect of that amendment would be if the manager gets a guarantee, basically escrow, for that amount of money, then we're going to say that condition's satisfied. So if somebody would make a motion to amend your previously...
Need you wait until we're... are we up? Are we open?
You don't have to wait. Yeah, we're open. Legally, you're okay.
Okay.
But we want the people to be able to watch this particular thing.
I think Beth said you're ready.
Did you have a queue for this? I was asking to be in a queue.
I have a queue, but I'm going to put the motion out, ask for a motion first.
Do we need a motion to extend first?
Oh, he said we didn't need it, but...
You can keep going if you want.
It's a special meeting.
Okay.
It is a special meeting at that, isn't it?
Somebody needs to put the motion out that Glenn just talked about.
So moved.
But you got to put in the dollar amount.
I was going to...
I'm sorry. A short break would be...
Less than?
No, less than $4 million.
Could you read that for the public's benefit?
Yes. Okay, so what's being proposed, the motion... was there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion would be to amend the motion that you previously passed before the executive session, so that the last part of the motion would read, "The city's offer contingent on other parties entering into an agreement with the city within 60 days satisfactory to the city manager that guarantees not less than $4 million of private funds for the cost of renovating, maintaining, and operating Civic Stadium."
So moved.
Alan's the second.
I'm just not enough to do all three.
Before I second it...
I'm in the queue first.
That's true. That's true. I'm just looking to see if there's a second. Talk about it. Okay. All right. Now Mike's in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. What we did at first, which I understand and appreciate with the mayor's effort to guarantee that the city would not be on the line and not be held to pay for renovation and maintenance, we are now changing. If this vote passes, the city will then be on the line for what it actually costs if it's more than $4 million, which is what this motion changes it to. George has good information that it may cost less. I've heard professionals talk about how it's going to cost 15 million. The best information that we have from professionals, which is how we usually make decisions, is from the school district saying it will take $10 million. The manager's recommendation was that $10 million would be required to guarantee renovation. That was what he wanted to do. We are now supplanting his and professional judgment to say with this motion, "No, we only need four. If it does cost more, we won't know that till later and we'll be on the hook." I think this is throwing the dice with the city's financial future, and it's extremely irresponsible.
So Glenn, if it's... somebody has to put 10 in escrow, that doesn't mean that they would spend it?
Correct. But it's locked up.
But it's locked up.
It can't spend for anything else.
Correct.
I just don't know what to do about that. Alan?
Let me read the professional caveat that came with the 4J estimate, which was done with 4J staff and working with tradespeople from the Chamber of Commerce. So it was kind of informal and made a whole bunch of assumptions, but then they attach this gigantic caveat to it, which, "Any redevelopment/preservation approach to Civic Stadium will vary in scope and overall cost. The attached estimate represents a magnitude of comprehensive needs, comprehensive needs, projection using square footage and volume projection, but is not based on a refined scope or precise construction documents." So it's basically a ballpark estimate, if you will, of what's needed to make this and completely renovate it in all the senses that we're talking about in the ultimate vision about what this would... ultimate build-out would look like. I think that there is a long way between that and what the Turner estimate came, which was... and this, by the way, was in 2009. The Turner estimate was in 2010. So they're both a little dated, but the... and that one was about $2.3 million. So somewhere in between is what you need to be able to make it functional for being able to be used. So I think that that number, around $4 million, is sufficient to get us to where we need to be able to, where it's very usable, nice, not calac, but everything is pretty much dealt with. And then... but the one thing I would also add, and maybe I can add this as a friendly amendment, which is that your language in the motion said renovate...
Maintain and operate.
Operate. And so I would renovate, maintain, and operate, and that they also provide us a plan for all of those things and a business plan for operating the facility and its ultimate build-out.
Is that a friendly? Do you accept that as a friendly?
I accept that.
Does Glenn have the language?
Plan sufficient?
You better give me the exact language that you want because I'm not sure of your intention.
The intention was to add that they have to give us a business plan sufficient as well to do all of that. It's not just that they come up with $4 million. It's that they have to have a plan that has all those particulars in it behind that plan. It's not... right now, this just says, the only requirement is $4 million in an escrow account.
Yeah, correct.
There needs to be... yeah, a project plan, a business plan, and a long-term plan associated with that. So it's not just $4 million in an escrow.
And is your expectation that the city manager is going to review the adequacy of that business plan, or that if they turn in something with the title on it, "Business Plan," that that's sufficient? And I'm not trying to mince words here. There is a very significant difference between saying, "You give us $4 million," which is an objective requirement that nobody can dispute, either it happened or it didn't happen, versus a very subjective, "Give us..." and I know you didn't use the word, but somebody else did, "Give us an adequate business plan." So I'm not sure what your intention is when you say in the next 60 days, they have to give us something beyond $4 million.
A plan that demonstrates the viability of their proposal.
Yeah, a plan that demonstrates the viability of the proposal.
Then you're asking the city manager to determine whether it's viable, and that is also an extremely subjective requirement, that if you ask 10 different people, you'll get 10 different answers.
Yeah, and... right. And that's why we pay the city manager a big bucks. But also, if someone comes up with $4 million, I think they're going to have their act together enough to be able to come up with a business plan that would meet the level of what we would consider adequate.
Again, adequate to... what's the business plan intended to do?
Show the viability of the business, of the long-term profitability?
Of operating the...
The operating, maintaining, and finishing the renovation of Civic Stadium.
Right.
Is it that standard?
I can add...
I'm pretty sure it's going to be a nonprofit, but...
I can add that language to the motion. Again, it's not clear to me exactly what it is that the city manager and staff would be using as criteria to determine whether that was met, in part because the council hasn't said, "Here's how Civic Stadium's going to be used." For example, the assumption in the conversation so far is it's going to be used as a soccer stadium. But George also said, "And it can be used for music." What else can it be used for?
Track and field?
Exactly. And so that's why I'm not sure, again, what the business plan... how we're going to review the business plan. My suggestion to you is you leave this as an objective requirement rather than put in something that's going to require a subjective review from staff. But I can add those words if you want.
I'd prefer that because having looked at some of the business plans that have been submitted over the last couple of years, different people will differ on the viability of the plans. Sadly, that's true.
So your preference is to delete that requirement?
That would be my preference.
What if we just set up and it's going to be planned?
Or if they... or it could be on council's approval of the plan.
Absolutely. Let's do it that way.
Contingent upon approval.
For sure.
Of a plan contingent on approval. That makes sense to me.
And we'd review it and do all that kind of stuff. We would bring... yeah, we can do all that, but it would come back.
In 60 days?
So I've got... just so you know, I've got Chris, George Brown, Claire, and George Pauling in the queue here. Betty, why don't you go, Betty, first?
Is that okay?
Say, I don't think $3 million. I think $4 million is too much to ask them to come up with that quickly. I think that if people are serious... these people are serious about doing it, and they will want to finish without our telling them. And if $3 million would do a basic thing, that's what I think we should have. As for a plan, I think that's awfully fast to come up with a plan. And it leaves it open to the manager, actually, to decide whether or not we should purchase it. If he can say, "No, this isn't a plan."
We change it to council approval.
Yeah, well, that's... still, I think it's too vague still. And I think we should... we know that if people are serious about raising big amounts of money, and this is already a big amount, that they're going to be serious about having a decent plan. We don't have to... and we said we weren't going to manage it. And now we're talking about managing it, about using staff time to manage it. And I think that we should leave it up to the group of people who want to take care of it, to manage it. Thank you.
All right. Chris?
There's still a lot of fill-in-the-blanks here. Fill-in-the-blanks not only about dollar amounts, which we have to arrive at, but there's also fill-in-the-blanks about who's going to do it, what guarantees do we have. We're trying to decide an amount that is reasonable for the escrow to protect us, in other words. That's really what it is, so that we don't assume a financial liability. So we're talking about renovation, maintenance, operation, and we're initially setting it at $4 million. What guarantee do I have that $4 million is adequate? I have a bid from a construction company. Are they guaranteeing they would do it for that bid price? My guess is, it's a bid. It's not a guarantee. And we've done enough... and I know a number of us have done enough renovation projects. I've done a number of renovation projects in my career. And renovation's the most expensive, most unknown kind of project you can do. There are always surprises. There's always costs that are unanticipated. There's always things you didn't think about that occur. That's why they create guarantees, where they say, "I'm giving you this amount of money. You either do it or don't do it for that amount of money." We've built none of that into this process. We've said, "4 million dollars. If you can raise 4 million, then we'll pull the trigger and we'll go." There is no guarantee that that amount of money will be adequate. In fact, I am under the opinion that we're lowballing and that we may very rugged and unpleasant surprise when it turns out that the renovation, maintenance, and operation far exceeds $4 million, and we don't have any guarantees or contingency plans to deal with that when it occurs. So if we're going to go forward, I'm back to the notion of risk. We've got to go forward with a reasonable enough amount of money that it protects the city from that kind of risk. And I know that our hearts want to keep this amount as low as possible so that the community can raise that money and everything can be great. But I just cannot accept that level of a risk on behalf of the city for our good intentions. We've got to have an amount that's in escrow that protects the city. And to me, $4 million... We've got to have an amount that's in escrow that protects the city, and to me, 4 million is not adequate to protect the city. So I would move to amend that the amount not less than is at least 5.5 million dollars, and I think that's probably low, but at least I'm more comfortable with 5.5 million than I am with 4.
Second.
That's good, because I was going to say 6, so finally.
Could you put me in the queue, Mayor?
I don't have you in the queue, I've got George Brown, I've got Claire, I've got George Polling, now I've got Mike.
Well, you know, this is kind of escalating out of hand here, I think. We start with a $3 million, a solid $3 million with contingencies built in for cost overruns for the renovation of the fields, a parking lot and the stadium, totally code compliant with fire suppression ADA, a really nice facility. And now we're bumping in and we're saying, well, that's not good enough. No, it's got to be 5.5 million, it's got to be 6, it's got to be 7, it's got to be 10. It's really unrealistic, it's not, it's not going to cost that much plus. I think we're lumping too many things together here, required in the escrow account. First of all, it's set up for rehabilitation and then you require maintenance, well, when you, once you rehabilitate it, it's going to require very little maintenance, very little, we have no idea what that will be, but it will be minimal. And then we're tacking on management of the operations. Normally, see, the city has to get site control first and then you, you select via competitive process, the management firm, and you look at their proposals and you pick the best one. And you look at their track record, there's lots of companies all over the United States that do this. They are the ones that will pay a grant, and then you negotiate the whole thing with the one that you select. You negotiate the ground lease, the percentage of ticket sales, they keep concessions normally, you say, well, and you have to pay, you know, 1% or 2% towards the renovation costs that were incurred. And then that's when you do this, you don't, you don't front-load the purchase offer with some hypothetical cost of what it's going to cost to manage, to manage it, because we don't know what any of the proposals are. And by the way, there's a reason people do this, they make money out of it. They're not doing it out of the kindness of their hoods, they do it because it's a money-making, you know, enterprise, and so they're, it's very competitive, there's lots of, Cal Ripken has a stadium management company and it's, it's, you know, I think there'll be plenty of good proposals to choose from, so I, I don't really think that that wording should be in there, maintenance and management. I think what we're mainly want to worry about is, is the amount in the escrow fund. And I think 4 is plenty, we could do 4.5. I think anything over that is, is putting way too many conditions on, on something that I'm convinced won't cost that much. So I think we should not, not set artificially high limits and discourage.
I'm just saying.
So I'm going to, before I call on Claire, I'm going to interject in here, that my vote was, earlier vote was dependent on feeling comfortable that the city was not going to have to bear the ongoing cost, and that's why I put that language in. So if you back down from that language, then you, I'm not there anymore because I still, I'm still in the same place I've been all along, which is I'm willing for us to put something in to make this happen, but I'm not willing, because of our financial situation, for us to take on the burden of maintenance and renovation and ongoing running of it. So that's, that's where I am on that, so my, that changes, my vote goes away, just to say. All right, Claire.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I totally get that. I think what we're trying to do here is balance the ambition to create an opportunity for folks to come in and rehabilitate and maintain and operate the field and mitigating the risk to the city in offering that opportunity. I am, could be persuaded about whether the escrow account should contain more than 4 million. I wonder if adding an amendment, yet another amendment that reads along the line, should the parties, meaning the city and the party that we engage in this project to go forward with, find that the fill-in-the-blank amount is insufficient to restore, maintain and operate the facility, the city shall have the option of terminating the agreement and place the property for sale. Maybe that doesn't need to be said because we would probably have that authority already, but that's the idea, right? That we might set this goal, they might meet the goal, we might find that there are many unknowns that end up costing more and the entity is not able to fulfill their obligation. We don't want to take on the cost, so we terminate the agreement, whatever work's been done's been done, and we turn around and, and go through the process that 4J is going through. That would not be my favorite scenario, but that is possible.
We wouldn't need that kind of a, anything, because we would enter into some sort of a contract with somebody, and that contract, I think, would say, if you don't perform, then here's what happens to that. And what happens to that could be, we take all your money and your property back, so...
So to some extent, our fear around this swinging back on us and now we've got to take up this property and continue the operations of something that's not viable, is maybe unfounded, that we have the power to terminate that agreement even if they meet the criteria of having that money in the escrow account and start the renovations and then realize they don't, they can't get through it with the 4 million that we've required of them.
The agreement will not require, we're now talking about two different agreements. There's the agreement with 4J to purchase, we will have already purchased.
Right.
So we now own it, so the only clarification I would make in what you said is, now that we own it, all of the conversation you had before about whether we're going to have ongoing maintenance responsibilities and whether we'd actually be able to sell it for what we purchased it for, all that comes back into play, but we would not, the agreement that we have with the private party who's putting up the funds would not require that, it would not foreclose your ability to say, this isn't working out, we're selling. It may require us, I mean, if I were the private party, it's going to require us to return their money, because otherwise they're giving us money and there's no guarantee they're going to be able to have it used for the purpose that it was donated. But you don't need anything in this motion to do that. And just as a reminder, you currently have on the table a motion to amend 4 million to 5.5. So it would, before anybody offers any other motions to amend, it would be good to deal with that one.
And Councilor Clark seconded it and we haven't voted on it.
So before we vote on that, I've got George Polling and Mike.
I just want to make it clear that the 5 million that we're now talking about is earmarked for refurbishing only, it has nothing to do with the future maintenance, operation and managing, is that correct?
Or mothballing.
That is not correct.
Well, the motion actually includes renovation, maintenance and operation.
And mothballing?
And it's 5.5.
5.5.
It does not specify mothballing.
So it does not, it doesn't separate, the motion does not separate the refurbishing from the other part?
Correct.
So all we're asking somebody to do is come up with $5 million to refurbish and maintain, run and operate that thing forever?
I believe the motion to amend was 5.5 million, not 5.
In the bank, that shows us they can do it.
And there was a friendly amendment, the plan approved by council.
Okay, all right. Well, now that I got that clear, I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I would, I would just, I appreciate the spirit of your last comments there. It is, it is yours to judge what that threshold is. I would suggest it isn't met with either of these things that changed the motion from what we passed prior to executive session. I wrote down what you said when you said it, because as I brought it before, for me, that was the ballgame, was that those words were kind of subjective there. But what you said was that you would be willing to support so long as that other party brought forward an amount sufficient and to commit, excuse me, you said an amount, sufficient to guarantee that the renovation costs and the maintenance costs would be covered. So your standard before, as you mentioned, was the guarantee that all of those costs would be covered and I assumed that the city would then not face any unforeseen expense. So if we change that now to, well, we're going to ask them just to cover 5.5 million of it, and it comes in at, or 4 million of it, and it comes in somehow closer to what folks from the U of O and other people I've talked to said is going to be 15 million plus ongoing maintenance, then we have by no means guaranteed it. So I'm asking you to, to give careful, because this decision is going to be yours. Give careful consideration to what constitutes guaranteeing that the city won't face massive cost.
That's a good comment, Mike, and I guess my use of word guarantee is there's no, there's no guarantee. I mean, you don't have a contract that says all unforeseen circumstances, I know them and I can, I can get out of that, and it's a reasonable, the effort is to, to make sure that there's a reasonable amount of resources brought to the table that we will do, we think we have a good chance of having those things covered, if you're willing to.
If I still have a couple of seconds left on my...
I thought you wanted an answer, sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done there with that answer to that, Mayor. I was asking for the sake actually to consider, I appreciate your answer very much. What I was saying was that the guarantee comes in from knowing it's covered, and yeah, there's, that's, that's a tough thing, how do you know? How do you do that? We have experts who've mentioned the numbers, but we're thinking we know better and that gives me great pause. But what I would say is, what if that number is what the manager suggests it should be, which is 10 mil? What if it's 5.5? I mean, where is it at a point where we know we should be making this proposal or we shouldn't because we can't afford it? That's the actual risk.
All right, I think we need to vote unless you've got something that's so pressing on Chris's motion, which is the 5.5. All right.
I just, I just want to clarify, we're, I think this is where we're at so far, but I could be wrong. We've agreed on the purchase offer price previously, and now we're talking about 5.5.
The escrow.
The next 60 days.
Okay, thank you.
I have something about that motion. I don't think we need to have all the money before they start anything. We're just asking, my feeling is, we're asking for them to give a sizable amount of money to show us that they're serious and they can do it, and they can raise more money afterwards. We wouldn't expect everything to be raised now, which is why I even thought 4 million was too much, but that's all.
That's not, that's not...
The difference between you and me, I think, is that you're thinking of this as the donations from citizens across the community, and I'm thinking of this is, is there a particular entity that I've been led to believe has serious interest in this and is willing to put considerable resources out, and that's what I'm counting on to make this happen.
Nice to know who this is, so we have a better idea of confidence.
I don't know who that is either.
Is this a note?
I have a question.
I'm going to go to Greg first.
Okay, just a question.
George, it'd be nice to know who that is.
Or any way you cut this, this is a house of cards. So, you know, if nobody comes up with the escrow amount in 60 days, the point is moot. And the people who have been talking around this have yet to disclose who they are. I would assume that the sugar mama or sugar daddy that has this kind of bankroll will disclose themselves, step up to the plate and do it or not. But in the last three years, it hasn't happened yet. And there's been plenty of opportunity for that to happen, so I just want to make that point.
George?
I guess my question is, you know, there's, there's the existing escrow account. So are we, does the 5 million, 5.5 million dollar figure, does that include what we're asking a party to do in addition to, or do they get combined with the already existing escrow account and how many funds? I mean, is that, I mean, I'm not sure what the intention of...
The way I interpret this motion is, the city has in hand 5.5 million dollars. If the people who have the other escrow account want to contribute that to this escrow account, it counts. If they don't give it to us, it doesn't exist as far as this motion is concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Any final comment that I will make about this is that, and I think you know this, in the world of business, we frequently hear people not willing to reveal until they got their whole thing together, and this is...
Very common.
This is very common, and it'll happen or it won't happen.
Half of us know and half of us don't, right?
I don't think half of us know.
No, everybody knows.
I don't know any...
I don't think anybody knows.
I don't, I don't know.
Sure.
People who are doing it probably know.
All right, all those in favor of Chris's motion?
Which is 5.5, no?
5.5. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and opposition, 1, it passes. Okay, we've got the 5.5.
So now you're back to, that was an amendment...
But now we're back to the main motion.
And the main motion, as I understand it, includes both that language as well as the friendly related to the plan, and so if you're getting ready to vote on all of it, I would like to read you the whole thing so it's clear what you're voting on. So it's really the whole motion plus the amendments. I move to direct the city manager to submit a purchase offer using park bond funds for Civic Stadium property to the 4J school board by December 3, 2013, with the offer contingent on other parties, 1, entering into an agreement with the city within 60 days satisfactory to the city manager that guarantees not less than 5.5 million dollars of private funds for the cost of renovating, maintaining and operating Civic Stadium, and 2, submitting a business plan for Civic Stadium that is reviewed and approved by council.
All right. Was I not...
The last part?
And that's a guarantee.
Submitting a business plan for Civic Stadium that is reviewed and approved by council, meaning city council, not legal counsel.
By the business plan, you mean management plan, not necessarily renovation plan?
I mean whatever you guys intend, because you're the ones who are reviewing it and approving it.
All right, okay.
Okay.
Question, if we pass this and it goes or it doesn't go, is this the end of this?
Uh-uh.
For us, as, you know, as a council, because I don't want to, you know, if we do this, I don't want to bring this back up, you know, if January, February with somebody with another amazing, you know...
The business plan automatically comes back.
Well, number one, this is really up, I mean, all we're doing is saying we're willing to try this, but it's going to be up to this, to the 4J to decide whether this is even, if something they want to even consider.
If they're willing to do it, yeah.
And should they decide that they want to do that, then you have said you want to see a plan.
Mm-hmm.
That's really, that's...
When 4J picks on the other ones, it comes back as a zone change.
Yeah.
So it never ends, Greg.
So we'll come back to answer your question.
All right, all those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and opposition, 1, 2, 3, it passes. Thank you.
Glenn, can you send out that?